Okay, we'll call the meeting to order as Misty gets her receipt here.
The new girl's causing trouble already.
So could we rise to have a flag to the flag?
Was I supposed to be seated?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on our agenda today is to welcome our new member to this team, Misty Hollis. We certainly have you to honor. And don't hesitate to ask questions or...
Oh, she won't.
I told Max I'd be quiet tonight. Try at least.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Misty's highly qualified and will be a great asset for us going forward. And appreciate her stepping up to take this role.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
So move.
Agreed.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Make motion to approve the minutes from last workshop?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Matthew Kane.
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
In front of you, you have a copy of the interlocal agreement that's in the dispatch center in the city of Richmond. For those that are new or maybe need reminding each year, we find that interlocal with the city, if they agree to reimburse town for the actual personnel expenses each month that is billed by the auditor's office at the end of each month of the city. And then the city reimburses the county for that. This document hasn't changed the last two or three years. The verbiage has remained the same. The city of Richmond uses this document as their way to budget for this. And they have asked us to use the last five years of historical data when they are figuring that. So that's why you'll see that at the very last page of civic aid with our recent number for 2022. So we always start this process in having it approved by commissioners and by council. And then we send it across the street to have the city council approve. So I'm here before you this evening to make sure there's no questions, or if there are questions, we'll get through them and to ask for your approval of the 2025 911.
Any questions?
Make a motion that we allow Max as president to sign the interlocal agreement.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I might add that it says it references the council has a position on this board. And Misty Hollis is my appointee to be on that.
Okay. I will try to remember that. So it would remind me that the meeting has that executive body normally into July, civil of July into July as we start to prepare for next year's.
Okay, Misty, keep that in mind.
We also need to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the emergency communication department of the city of Richmond and authorize president to sign on behalf.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
How many of these do we need signed?
Technically just one, and I believe Mr. Foster has the original.
Okay.
It does have a paper clip.
Do you have to go with it?
And then I'll work with Bobby or whomever in getting that over to the city so it gets into the right hands.
Great.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, we have BCA appointment. Steve, do you want to address that?
Right. Mr. Becker has been a longtime member of the both the plan commission and the BCA. And he's decided to cut back a little bit, although this will allow him to cut back just a bit. This is being appointed as an alternate member. Recall that the council has an appointment. Commissioners have appointments to the BCA as well as the plan commission. It's our preference so that Becker can fill in as an alternate for any one of those appointments should one of them be absent. So he has already been appointed by the commissioners as an alternate. And I ask that you appoint him as your alternate as well.
Any questions to Steve?
What was the point, Steve Becker, the alternate?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So be it. Is there anything we need to sign on that, Steve? Or is that... Okay, great. Lester has a transfer request.
So you're familiar with the opioid funding? And we are asking to take the, from the $32,678.05 that is available in the unrestricted portion of opioid funds and transfer that to line 1238, 32,000, excuse me, contractual professional so that we can spend those dollars. The first thing we have agreed within the commissioners to pay is a total of $7,000 for operation of warming shelters in the county. And so that will... It's the only thing at this point that we have determined we want to spend out of that opioid unrestricted. We actually took that step in December, but they're paying bills at that point. So we need to do this for this year.
Any question to the commissioners? We have a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make the motion that we approve Jeff's request, the transfer of $32,678.05.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Auditor, you have a request to transfer?
I've got two, one of which is not on here after our discussion with you and you with the prosecutor. He has a transfer request of $104,000 to be used in the...
It's in the part-time fund, isn't it? The what? Part-time?
It's part-time line item.
Yeah, I'm trying to find... Yes. And the reason that you don't have it is... Mr. Smith, did you just work, talk to the prosecutor? I put this together rather than having him come to you. But this $104,000 will avoid me not having to write a check on appropriation that will be a negative in another pay.
You said transfer. Where's it coming from?
You've got to tell me. I've got it two different...
That's us funding it, not him transferring it, yeah.
It's one-time expenditure or contingency.
So just as a reminder, last year, for another case, we talked with him and he talked with us about hiring some interns to work instead of another full-time attorney position. He's continuing to have those interns, but failed to bring that up to us in the budget discussion for '25. So it's a small amount of money in there, which is not enough to do the next payroll.
Right.
And he has estimated that it's, he'll need $104,000 to cover those four time, part-time interns, attorneys that would be working with him.
And I agree with that $104,000. We checked to see what the payroll was.
Yeah, what did he spend last year, a total, on that part-time line item? What did we end up with?
$4,000.
No, what did we spend last year?
Oh, $24,000.
$63,000.
$650,000 plus his $4,000?
He was less than.
There's some change. Can you transfer $64,000 at your last meeting in December?
What is the balancing contingency in one time?
Well... I asked Linda to give that to me. You haven't spent hardly anything out of it yet.
Well, you spent $2,000 and some dollars out of this year so far. You only had $4,000 in there.
Of what he had.
Yeah, he's calculated.
The first payroll was $2,700.
So he's calculated.
Because that's what he pays the next time. There's not enough money to cover the second payroll, which is next week.
So my thought would be that we take this out of the contingency fund in the council's budget to cover this expense. And then we need to make sure that next year's budget cycle gets covered.
In '24 because he didn't start.
Right.
Yeah, because we've done it for a couple of years.
It was $60,000 or something.
Do you have the line item numbers going in too for Bobby's?
You want it, which one? You're going to take it out, the contingency.
Contingency.
You got a form for that, Mark?
They've all got it filled out. But I need signatures.
I'll make the motion if he gives me the favor to say what the numbers are.
33950, location 61, out of the county general fund, which is the prosecutor's office.
So Kathy has made the motion to approve this transfer.
I will make the motion that we move from council contingency, $104,000, to prosecutor's line item...
Yeah.
13480, location 0009.
Do you have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Move in second to transfer the $104,000 to the prosecutor's line item. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Make sure that's in his 26 now.
And you got another request?
Yes, this one's mine. I had requested and I gave it to Bobby, $10,000 for overtime in my office. I'm going to reduce that to $4,000, which is what we allowed, what you allowed in December at your meeting. And that's what I would request. I like the way the sheriff does his. He has some that he does as comp time and he does some as overtime. And the $4,000 will keep me below the 40-hour restriction that HR has on comp time.
Questions to Mark?
Do you have it in your funds anywhere to move it?
Heaven, no. You guys passed a budget so damn tight.
I'm just asking, Mark.
I would, I'm asking to take it from the contingency fund. It's us to fund it. That's what we took it out of in December.
So his request is to transfer $4,000 from the council's contingency fund...
Correct.
...to the line item that we established, I believe, already for the overtime. Is that correct?
I'm going to establish a line item, which you did in December, did not carry forward. To count 1,000, there's a fund, county general, code 13640, location 2, county general, auditor's office, overtime, $4,000.
But you're also going to keep trying to use comp time in the meantime also.
We're going to use, we are going to use comp time. But this is an effort to keep it below the 40 hours that I think council or HR has as the restriction on the number of hours.
Comp time hours is a limit of, they're supposed to not have more than 40, I believe. Isn't that right, Jeff?
And even if somebody gets up to 30 hours, I still might use overtime to go that other 10. The comp time is difficult because of the... And I talked to Max about it. I've got one employee in there that between comp time and vacation and all of the time that pays holidays, two months out of the year, she's not in the office. And that's hard to make up.
Except if she is and we pay her for it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the transfer, aye? You made the motion, didn't you?
You did.
Or did? I'm thinking back to the other.
You don't have a... I will make...
Where are we going to fund it from?
And we're going to, $4,000, you talked about $10,000.
And $4,000.
He's, no, not both.
He's reduced his request.
Well, I want to be clear that it's $4,000, not $10,000.
I would suggest we do the $4,000 this time, but make it clear to the auditor that use this sparingly because we may not be able to go back to the well another time.
Well, hopefully you're going to have to go back because it's going to be in my budget for '25 or '26 now. It won't be a line item that I should have to come to you to do.
Right.
So, so are you ready? I'll make the motion that we take out of council contingency, $4,000, to fund the auditor's overtime line item, 13640.
13640, location triple 2. Triple 02.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to transfer the $4,000, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Does that take care of all the transfers?
That's all I have.
We sent that one from Max to sign.
Move into items for discussion. Ally's here from the fairgrounds. You want to make an introduction there?
This will be your annual report so that you can see the progress that we've made with some of the changes that we've made at the fairgrounds. You received a similar report last year, so this will be an update for the 2020... And Haley is here. And up on the screen will be a PowerPoint to go along with her discussion.
Jeff and Max, I apologize. It's right behind you guys. I don't know how to get connected to that other...
That's okay. It's Steve's fault. He should know better.
Good evening. Glad to have you back again to give another update on fairgrounds. What you're looking at right now is just a brief collage of some few pictures that I've been able to take from 2024. It's also now our updated cover picture for our Facebook page. So we'll get right into it here. Something new this year that we introduced was email blasts. Our website host, Squarespace, has this option. So it's not hardly expensive at all really. And I figured it'd be a great tool to start utilizing. So in September of this past year, I noticed that Squarespace has the option for like a pop-up window. So to somebody who's visited the website for the first time, they'll get this pop-up that says, that gives them the option to sign up for our email blast. So when I put that into place, we went from 36 email subscribers in August to 154 in September. And now we're currently at 183 email subscribers, which I'm pretty happy with. We started sending out the email blasts in September, once we gained a decent amount of subscribers. And I will give you a preview here of what that looks like. So I do encourage you all to sign up if you haven't already. And it's basically just a brief overview of what events we have going on at the fairgrounds for the month with information on each event. And then it provides links for the event. So the chamber will be in the first main exit hall this Friday. So that link just takes them to more information. And then one thing I also would like to highlight, the industry average for open rates for email campaigns is 21.5%. And currently with the email blasts that we've sent out so far, we're at 36.2%. So it's, it's pretty hard to get a high number with that in general, just because you guys know, you get tons of emails every day. So that's why I only send them out monthly, try not to put too much in an inbox. And then something I'm going to try and do this year is do a couple of feature stories on events that have been at the fairgrounds for many years, such as Autumn Oaks for the Vintage Wheels Car Show. So moving into our social media, we have two main social media pages, Facebook and Instagram. On the left there is our best performing post from the year. If you were here last year, you might remember that last year's best performing post was about a dinosaur event. And that post had over 10,000, a reach of over 10,000. So we didn't quite make that this year. But goals for, or goals for, sorry, goals for this year, we didn't make that last year. But as you can see, it reached just over 4,200 users with 37 interactions. The page itself for Facebook for the entire year reached 57,000 users and had over 20,000 Facebook page visits. And then our Instagram, I think I said this last year, Instagram's a little bit harder to grow on quickly, but we've seen steady increase and I'm happy with where it's heading. So it reached 1,100 users and had 305 page visits. And then on the left side there, that's a screenshot from our Facebook page of the recent posts, just the photos, to give you an idea of what's been posted. The top left, it's kind of hard to see there, but we're at 1,100 likes for the Facebook page and 1,600 followers. And then on our Instagram page, we're at 195 followers. So to compare from this time last year, when I gave this presentation, our Facebook page only had 384 likes and 661 followers and our Instagram was at 118 followers. So things are steadily increasing. And then one other thing that I tried to do a little bit more of this past year was short-form videos, commonly known as reels. We all do TikTok. So I'll show you one that I did for the holiday marketplace. And then the first thing I created was there. So this is kind of gives a quick fun video of how that building can be transformed in a matter of hours. There we go. Moving on to the website, this was a pretty good year for our website. We had 20,000 page visits. And I think that just goes to show that the community really is utilizing it. Aside from the homepage, the upcoming events page was the most popular. And again, that's where people can find more information on all of our events. One other interesting thing with the website this past year, so on the right lists a bunch of different states. I couldn't get them all to fit in a screenshot, but we had page visits from 47 states in 2024. So maybe in 2025, we'll get to all 50 states. I know there's a few people that weren't here for this presentation last year, so we will do a quick walkthrough of the website. So here's the homepage and have a slideshow of some pictures from the past year that I've been able to get. A brief summary on the homepage, you can also see our upcoming events and another option to sign up for the email blast partners and then some testimonials from past renters. Go to our facility rentals page. And then here, obviously interested renters can find quite a bit of information. If they want to see more pictures of a specific building, they can go to additional images and see more from outside and inside of the building. And this is a great tool for me to utilize as well because when I'm talking to people on the phone, they've never been to our fairgrounds before, they may have not seen our website, all of them here, and they can learn more. For our events, so the upcoming events page, again, you saw that earlier. But when you click on an event, similar to the email blast, you get more information on the link where you can also find out more. Also on that events section, we have events images page now. I don't believe I had this last year, I might have, but there's definitely been a lot more pictures added. So I try to make it a point this past year to get pictures of as many events as possible just to showcase, you know, just how versatile our facilities are. So anyone can go and check out events from the year. And lastly, on that events section, is a plan your event page. So here, people, I actually just got one of these today. They can fill out a facility request form. And that helps me just by knowing kind of what they're interested in, what they need. They can schedule a tour. This hasn't been utilized quite as often, normally just because people will call and talk to me on the phone or send me an email. Vendor recommendations, this is a new page that I added this past year just because of people wanting to know where they can rent table linens, lighting, et cetera. So these are all vendors that we've actually had out at the fairgrounds that I know are reliable. Local resources page, a lot of this information came from our friends at the tourism bureau. So more information on food and catering, lodging, and then the services that they offer. Again, you can just click more and then you can find out more information. Lake County 4H Fair, that takes individuals to the fair's website, which is completely separate from ours. And then the contact page, this form is utilized quite a bit, just a simple contact form. And then on the left there, gives a snapshot of our Instagram page. So then we'll get back to the presentation here. Any questions so far? I know I'm talking fast. Steve told me to talk not as fast this year and I feel good. You're doing great. Okay. Getting into the number side of things, you'll see that we were down just a little bit from 2023. But the big thing to keep in mind there, in July of 2023, we had a, it's called a national camp convention. Basically, it was a week-long camping rally and that rental alone was $30,000. So other than that, I'm pretty happy to see those numbers where we're at.
So if you take out that 36,000 or that 30,000 for that one month, we still, we would show an increase for 2024. And that, that particular event, it didn't come back this year because they go to different places purposely. So I think we got good reviews when they were here. We think they will visit us again. I might also mention that Haley has been working with another national association. It looks like we're going to land another national event in 2026.
Sure. Another exciting thing that we had this past year was our new tables and chairs. Our renters were pretty happy to have that as an option, just not having to pay, you know, delivery costs with somebody else. So those were utilized quite a bit and...
And I might mention then, remember when we talked about this initially and we paid for this out of the fairgrounds rental rights or naming rights money? The $14,000 would represent about a three-year payback for what we have purchased.
Moving into some rental highlights from this past year, since we didn't have a $30,000 rental, the United General Clubs Autumn Oaks was our highest paid for the year at just over $12,000. We had two new... Um, we had two new livestock events this past year. Uh, one was Willoughby Sales National Debut and the other was Midwest Madness Pig Show. Uh, just a brief info on those two organizations, Willoughby's is a nationally known uh, online sale platform utilized heavily in the livestock industry. And then the Midwest Madness Hog Show, um, that show had over two hundred entries with exhibitors from Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, Illinois, Kentucky. So our fairgrounds are getting exposed. Other new rentals from twenty twenty-four included the Richmond Coin and Currency Club Coin Show, they're back again in twenty twenty-five. Um, the Girls Ink Signature Event Wrestling Revolver and then various other birthday parties, auctions, weddings, receptions, et cetera. Uh, some long time rentals that came back for another year included the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, their annual dinner. Eastern Indiana Gym and Mineral Show, Central Indiana Gun Shows, Boys and Girls Clubs, Smart Futures Dinner, uh, the Veterans Appreciation Dinner and the Indiana Farm and Dycast Toy Show. And then one last point that I think kind of just shows how utilized our facilities are. Um, out of the three hundred and sixty-five days this past year, our facilities were utilized two hundred and ninety-seven of those states, leaving only sixty-eight days without any activity. So that's including like four H Club meetings, um. Gosh, there's so many, four H Club meetings, um, we've had Dr. Prue Wayne County out there to have their uh, meetings and then some various county units as well, so. Moving into looking ahead, last slide, um, just kind of a chart that shows where we're at for twenty twenty-five. Randomly still have a long way to go into the year, but I'm pretty happy to see that fifty-three uh, rental confirmed rentals on the calendar so far. Um, so and then new paid rentals for this year, uh, we've got ten and then forty-three returning paid rentals. And just to highlight a few of those new paid rentals this year, uh, we'll have the Winter Wonders Vendor Expo, which is actually happening this weekend in the First Bank Coleman Center. In February, also in the First Bank Coleman Center will be the Black Expo. And then in March, UKC is coming back for a different event, um, it'll be the Aubrey Sports Midwest Classic. So that will bring in people from quite a few different states. So now that I'm done talking fastly, uh, what, what questions do we have?
Very good summary, huh? I had some questions coming into it and you've already answered them pretty well, so that's good.
I just want to tell you, I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Absolutely.
She was a very good hire and, and I'm glad that we've got our fairgrounds heading in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yes.
I do have a quick question, do you, have you had the pickleball people get ahold of you? Because I've read in different papers where they're from this state and this state, maybe that's a thought.
I have not, no. I know they utilized um, the First Bank Expo Hall two or three years ago, just like the local pickleball rooms. Um, I'm not sure what happened there, that was before I came on, but that's definitely a good idea.
It's a thought?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Certainly appreciate limitations that you feel are holding back the fairgrounds. It's only gonna be so big, but other than that.
Right, um, not per se, I mean, we've had a few different times where a kitchen over in the First Bank Expo Hall would be nice. Um, and then another common request that we get is like small meeting type spaces, conference rooms, um, which, you know, it's. It is what it is, but normally we can make that request work in the lobby of the First Bank Coleman Center if we don't have any other events going on. Um, and then for the kitchen requests, sometimes we're able to take a stove over to Expo if needed, but we make it work.
Coming from the Tourism Board, those are always the two things that um, keep people from coming here, breakout rooms for their conferences and kitchen space in that big.
Remember when we talked about this several years ago, one of the things that we're gonna do after about three years is re look back and see what has been utilized and what. Can't be all things to all people.
Yeah.
But do we need to capitalize on, on the ones that uh, keep returning? Or is there something that we need to do different? So we'll be doing that analyzation this, in, in this year.
Thank you.
Thanks Haley.
Thanks Haley, thanks Haley for your fine work and continued improvement there.
Hey, Sheriff. See me today and. Um, I'm here to present the uh, here's. Come through report for the last half of twenty twenty-four. And I'm sure you recall, I've sent this out to each of you in the form of email attachment uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to uh, cover this quickly. I really want to bring your attention to um, the ending balance of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And most particularly the receipts that we've received uh, in this last half and the expenditures or disbursements. Um, and it. It's pretty clear that uh, that their uh, receipts are, are far much less than the expenditures. Um, frankly, some seventy-five thousand dollars or less. So um, just in a nutshell, uh, the reasoning for that is there's been some changes in federal legislation requiring a, a uh, cap, which is a cap on the uh, telephone. Rates that we have historically charged, uh, that's been significantly reduced. And our inmate population uh, is as of Monday was a hundred and ninety-two. Where historically we've uh, been between two hundred and fifty to three hundred and twenty-five. So while that's a good thing, that also does have an impact on um, the conversation. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I believe you said the phone rate went down seventy percent?
Approximately seventy percent, yeah, it's uh, now happened at seven cents per minute. Um, we had, uh, we had been charging twenty-one cents, I believe.
Questions for Randy for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, did you have a chance to look at that contract?
Yeah, I, I don't think the commissioners approved it.
No, we were waiting for your review.
Well, it's fine, uh, do they, uh, there's no place for commissioners to sign, just Sheriff signing. I'm fine with it, in fact, it's verbatim.
Uh, I'll make a motion when you move for approval to contract for free health or poverty stricken. Citizens, right, it wasn't just inmates, it was population, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the, the contract with Reed, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries, you have our blessing.
Very good, I'll get that signed and out to them tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks Randy.
Anyone else have any? Before, before the commissioners. Is Steve going first or you?
Steve is going first, as always.
All right, before you have your bi-week, bi-monthly uh, for the project, nothing changed since our last report on the generator. On the extended stream equipment for the courthouse, they've given a tentative delivery date for that equipment, uh, January for the first. That might be a little bit aggressive, but that's the date that they are shooting for, for delivery.
The Coleman Center Ceiling Lighting Project, they are done uh, with main hall, the lights have been installed in the lobby and the kitchen.
The only thing that's remaining is the installation of the ceiling tiles in the uh, in the lobby and lighting and the ceiling tiles and the two airlocks uh, for the entrance. So they should be able to wrap that up before the end of next week. I want to bring your attention to that ten percent contingency that we plugged in from the naming rights money and in the lower right-hand corner of your report, you'll notice that the balance of the fairgrounds naming rights. Has now increased to a hundred and sixty-three thousand, we did receive the hundred thousand dollars uh, paid from first out of twenty twenty-four. And then that seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty was wrongly assessed by a contingency for the uh, roof and the lighting and the ceiling project in whole. Is not using that money, uh, I don't anticipate there might be a little bit with the lights that were added to the airlocks that came in the front door. But for the most part, uh, that uh, seventeen thousand will go, uh, will be unencumbered and so the remaining amount will be that hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The hardscape, uh, no, no change on the hardscape, although we will have a uh, security meeting, courthouse security meeting next week to discuss the plans of how we intend to uh, take care of access to the courthouse while we're under construction. That will include also uh, how we're gonna handle security as well as going into the courthouse. So that'll be discussed at a, at a meeting next week and we'll have more to report to you at your next meeting. The IT Cable Project continues, they uh, they're pretty well on schedule, the courthouse will be finished this week and they'll be moving to this building uh, next week. Uh, so that still is within the seventy-day project uh, timeframe that they initially had told us. The proxy card locks us, so uh, the equipment is on order, don't have a date, a start date yet, but the equipment has been ordered and soon as we get more information, we'll, that'll be forthcoming. The courthouse elevator, remember we rejected the bid on that, uh, recall that uh, the, one of the big obstacles was that existing flue that's in the shaft where the proposed elevators to go. There was a, an additional engineer came in yesterday to uh, see what that might look like, if that has to be removed, it will probably have to be removed should we go forward with that project. And how that will be removed and if there's any um, hazardous material in the structure above the shaft, but that was not tested initially. But if it has to come out the top, it would disturb that construction area up there, so uh, you'll, you'll get more information on that as I get, uh, get it from myself. And then showing down the low right-hand corner is your balance of your one-time contingency fund. Any questions on the report?
Steve, one quick question, I wasn't sure if I heard you correctly, the hundred thousand from First Bank Richmond for naming rights, you said for twenty-four, did you mean twenty-five?
Yeah.
So we're just now getting the money for twenty-four.
Comes in at the end of the year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So. It'll be seven more years.
Do you have any plans in place for, for those funds at this time?
I believe we have a fairgrounds committee next week and that'll probably be on the agenda to start discussion.
Any other questions on the project?
And I, I guess you might just mention that uh, in this last round of funding, one of the, one of the highest priorities uh, that the committee came up with and the commissioners agreed was, was uh, additional parking. Um, at the fairgrounds, pavement parking, uh, and so we're, we didn't have a chance to get that underway last year, but I, I'm, I would expect that would continue to be a high priority. And those of us who are going to the, the chamber dinner on Friday will probably see that um, many people have to park in the grass and in the snow and ice and. Uh, so additional pavement parking, I think is gonna continue to be a high priority. Correct, so it's, yeah. And with six hundred, there were people parking, you know, in the grass, so uh, it could be a challenge. It, it won't be Steve, it's gonna be beautiful, a beautiful evening. Absolute, no, it's sloppy, come on, we're being negative.
We're so positive.
Stop it.
So um, if there's no other questions on that, something for the commissioners, the fleet management committee uh, met this evening and the health department, as you know, they, they had in their budget uh, to purchase a vehicle. Which thankfully didn't approve for twenty twenty-five, they brought their uh, quotes to the fleet committee for recommendation and so for the commissioners, the recommendation is to buy one uh, twenty twenty-five Ford Escape. From Lark and Greenwood Ford in Connerville with a quota of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. I might mention that uh, the local dealer did bid on this, but it was seven percent over, so it did not fall within that local buying preference.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second to allow that purchase, uh, and they're paying for that out of uh, Health First Indiana Funds, I believe. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I just have a, a couple of things, you won't believe how quickly I'll, I'll get through my.
We'll be amazed.
Start timing me right now.
Okay.
Uh, really, only two things I wanna, I wanna point out to you. One is uh, as we are beginning to wrap up the projects uh, that we're paying for out of ARPA funds or at least engage in the, the, starting the final projects. Um, we are seeing that uh, we're coming to the end of approved projects for not only the county. Uh, but in, to some extent, the city and some of the towns that participated in the help program. And so six or eight months ago, uh, we started talking about the idea of a new planning process. Uh, we have uh, agreed and are working with the Wayne County Foundation, who will be coordinating that planning process. Uh, it, it will be uh, on a similar model where we've invited every incorporated town and city and the county, obviously, uh, to participate in that process. We raised uh, about eighty thousand dollars to pay for that process, uh, the foundation has contracted with HWC Engineering uh, to be the consultants on that process. And it will begin this month, so keep your eyes open for opportunities to participate. Uh, we are looking at the, the possibility, although I haven't cleared this with Max yet, of, of uh, engaging with the consultants at next month's uh, next month's meeting. On the workshop, the workshop meeting so that we're all here together. Um, and uh, so we're, we're still working on that schedule, but I will tell you that uh, as of this afternoon. Twelve of the fifteen incorporated entities in Wayne County have agreed to participate. Uh, and Acacia St. John continues to work with uh, with the three that have not committed yet. We need to, we need to have those commitments this week, so at, at least we've got twelve of the fifteen, if you remember, we had eight of the fifteen participate in help. So it's a significant increase, um, there's no costs to those entities to participate. But there also is no uh, direct funding stream that is uh, committed to helping to fund the projects that come out of this planning process. Again, it will be an attempt to uh, put together the highest priority uh, projects uh, that will uh, come out of uh, this planning process, so. Uh, so we'll keep you posted on, on exactly when and where uh, the, those opportunities to participate will be. We're expecting about a nine-month process uh, to get to the final plans. Secondly, uh, something that uh, that the commissioners have been working on for a while and I've had conversations with Dan Burke at the Health Department. One of the requirements of the Health First Indiana funding is to uh, have uh, form a collaborative advisory committee. Of, of other health-related organizations in the community uh, that give input on what are the highest priority pro- projects, programs. Uh, and ways to spend the health. that give input on what are the highest priority projects, programs, and ways to spend the Health First Indiana Funds. So we had one put together. We've had some leadership changes at the health department, as you know. We're working to put together another group. But I think the commissioner saw this as an opportunity to work together jointly with the Health First Indiana Funds, but also with the opioid settlement funds, which again are very much mental health related kinds of projects or programs that could be funded. So we're working to put together a joint advisory committee, if you will, that would give us input on what kind of programming and projects should we be doing? Both with, again, with the Health First Indiana Funds, which is about $1.5 million a year at this point. And then the opioid settlement funds. And we have $200,000-ish dollars on hand now. And we're expecting another tranche of money in 2025 to add to that. We had the, the most funding available in year one, a little bit less in year two. And the farther out we go, the lower the, the annual funding stream will be. But we think it's important to get community input into the highest priority uses of those funds to advise the commissioners. The commissioners will make the decisions, working with council, on how we spend those opioid dollars. The same with, with the Health First Indiana Funds. As the, as the health department comes up with their recommendations and it comes to you for budget approval, we'll all have the opportunity to weigh in on those. So that's all I have for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Set a record.
That'd be pretty good. No, not right. Pretty good. It's close.
That's right. Thanks. It's not on your agenda, but I do have an update on the other project that's going on, radios. I owe you a financial.
Yes. And you might, if you want to give an update on WUR, just a brief one.
Sure. I'll start with the radio. That'll be easier. We have our kickoff meeting with Motorola Solutions tomorrow with Matthew and Aaron and my team to begin the strategic planning for the radio infrastructure at the tower sites. So that starts tomorrow. The tower company, they were to do soil pourings last week at both locations, but we got hit with this weather. And now it'll be dependent upon the, the amount of freeze in the ground, if they're going to be able to complete those or need to wait till spring. So that's moving forward. Ron has the lease space agreements under review. So we hope in the next 30 days to have those finalized for the equipment on the towers. We've started paying invoices as contracted for the purchases. And to date, we've paid out about $775,000 to vendors for equipment purchases. In the near future, we'll start meeting with Matthew and the volunteer fire departments to talk about templates for the radios and radio assignments. And as we move into the spring, that equipment will be distributed and put into use probably before the towers are up and running. So we're still looking, dependent upon weather, summer completion timeframe. No major concerns or problems there to date. Jeff mentioned that prior to this meeting, the WR board met and received an update from Jeff on the dissolution of WR and guidance from Ron as to the responsibilities of the WR board to close out that entity as a quasi governmental entity and what Wayne County's responsibilities are. In the coming weeks, Jeff will be meeting with the commissioners in Union County to finalize the requirements that Ron has, has laid out. And Ron has provided us a document for that to happen. In the meantime, 2025 continues as the transition year for, for WR. The employees are still in place. We will be meeting with Soil and Water in the coming weeks to talk about what their needs are with those shared employees and what council should expect from Soil and Water in their 2026 budget proposal, because there'll be implications there potentially. And Jeff and I have been meeting with the city and the sanitary district to begin strategically planning recycling efforts for the future. We have to deal with WR first before we can do anything about recycling efforts and what that looks like and tipping fees through the sanitary district in the future. So things are moving along in that dissolution, and we'll keep you posted on that. Any questions?
Waste time, Jeff. You did. Good job.
That's not hard to do.
No heckling.
Mr. Coroner, do you have anything for us?
I do. Thank you. The first thing is where the printer died, and I don't need to bring your hand up, but I want to bring you up to speed on a situation. Four times in the last five months, we currently have had our cooler full of decedents. Luckily, we didn't receive another one. Working on some sort of a strategic plan. If that would happen, what would we do? And actually, right now, two days ago, we were full again and wanted to see as much as Kentucky, but we're still very close to full. So talking to the commissioners, I was looking at options to get us through. And I looked at two and a two person or three person stand up cooler that was portable. In other words, it could be put on wheels or casters, and we could use it for overflow. Originally, if I went with the company that we have now, it was going to cost a tremendous amount of money, $20,000 plus. But I have recognized in my research that we should easily be able to find a new unit for about $8,000 to $12,000. And this unit would actually hold three bodies vertical on a stand up table. The same with Steve Higaboff who sent down his group to the measure. I showed him where we would put it. It, it's a little tight, but yet again, it's portable. So we could move it around to the front of the other cooler if we had to, if we were overstocked. Steve and his group realize that our connection is to the generator because we really don't want to go down. So we're good there. And in talking to the one gentleman that came, he said it would be no problem to bring another cooler in and plug it to the electric unit. It should handle everything just fine. And it was basically already wired to do that. So I am more than, it's, it's not an item that we budgeted for in 2025. I'll be honest with you. Just came in. I wasn't sure. But I will send you all some documentation to look at an example. And if it's something you want to move forward with, then I will be glad to get bids. But like I said, right now, I don't have a contingency plan for the fifth body, but I should have a plan in place by next week temporarily.
So four is the most that you can hold at one time?
Yes, four is the most. We have a very nice unit. It's very wide and it's not mobile. Putting a two or a three bay vertical will fit in, in our room. Just a little tight, a little fit. And I, I hope to never have seven decedents in our cooler at the same time.
Are all those people Wayne County, are all the people that you have, are they Wayne County people or are we storing for other counties?
They are. No, we are not storing for other counties. I, I have not under my watch ever done that. I can tell you that Union County and Fayette County are going to lose a cooler when Reed tears down the old hospital down there. And they had asked if, you know, we could think about helping them. But I was advised this morning that they may have their own plan now. However, the three of us, in the past, the counties have worked well together. We had to cover for them when they were short. You know, like this day, they couldn't do it because whatever. So we recovered their calls for them. That happens rarely, but it does happen. But we have not housed any of their bodies. And, but everybody, I will tell you another situation that's happening. The reason we're holding bodies is because family does not want to claim their bodies. And there's, there's a multitude of reasons. My dad was in jail and he did all these horrible things. I don't care. I haven't heard from him, you know, or I haven't heard from this person in 20 years. Or in some cases, we cannot find any family. Now, we have, under all, I can, I can sign a paper and have anybody cremated. And we can do that. But we certainly have to show our due diligence. And then the funeral home that's willing to help us has to do their due diligence also. And then another problem we have is for the people that die in Wayne Township, they're only giving us $700. And we can't get any more. And $700 doesn't begin to even cover the cost of a cremation. And they're doing it as a favor, and we're rotating it around to different funeral homes. But Medicaid, if they have Medicaid, it pays $1,200. And I, I've requested to have a meeting with the Wayne Township trustee to see if we could work something out. But sometimes that causes the reason why we still have bodies in the cooler.
What's the average length of time you have a body?
Well, if we send them to autopsy, the autopsy will have them one to three days. And it's nice, the funeral home in many cases will go pick up the body from Ohio and bring it back. So we don't have them at all. But in other cases where we either don't do an autopsy or the family doesn't claim, based on when I've been here so far, we're averaging about 40 to 60 days. It's a long time. And after a certain period of time, you know, the decomp is starting to work and we have those problems.
So you'll be working with the commissioners and put together.
He, Jeff asked me to come tonight and just give a quick overview.
I think there are still some open questions as to whether another cooler would fit in the same room that the current one is in. It kind of depends on what model he proposes. But certainly, if, if we pursue this, there's going to be some significant expense. And I wanted you all to have that information as early in the process as you could. It may be that there's another location as we, as we clear out a lot of the records that have been stored in, in the courthouse that's nearby that, that would work as well. But we're looking at alternatives right now. And again, I thought it was important for council to have information about this request we just got. So that you're on top of it and have as much information.
And I'll have all that emailed to you by Friday. I'll send it out. I'll be the commissioner, but to the council with some prices that are published. It'll just, you know, will be exactly, but it'll be very close.
Good. When's the last time the council and the commissioners together went down through that area? So we have a better understanding of what is down there.
We could do that anytime.
We went after it was, when it was opened. Some of us did. They had like a.
I think it requires that we do that again.
Brett, I have a question.
Sure.
So you said that you have to do your due diligence. What's the law state, though, that how many days you have to keep them or what? Because it seems 60 days seems an awful long time to keep a, a body not claimed, or nobody wants to claim it. So.
It is. There, there isn't anything currently that I can find that shows that after so many days. It's up to the coroner, and I kind of lean on my attorney here. We've been in talks. In fact, just to give you an example, we're meeting Friday. I have a decedent that passed away who's an American, US citizen. She's an immigrant from Bosnia. She has lots of money, her bank account, and she passed away. And she has no body in the United States. And we're going through a process of due diligence where you set up a, an estate for her where we can get some things passed and sign some things that we can have her cremated. But it takes, it takes time. And this will be a delegate, a delegate case because we have a stack of immigration paperwork. And we're going to have to work with other, Ron's, and I've talked, we're going to have to work with other agencies, actually federal agencies, to try to figure out what to do. So.
So in a situation like that, even if you're able to get through the process and, and have the body cremated, what do you do with the remains?
Well, once I, once we go ahead and have it cremated, we've done everything that we can do. Then we have a storage area that we're putting all the decedents respectfully. And then we continue to try to find family members. I, I think we have four. We have five right now, but we have four that we inherited from the previous. And, and some of them are eight and 10 years old. So we're trying the best we can do to find, find that. And as far as a burial site for the unclaimed, we haven't found that one yet. It obviously would cost money, but we'll, we'll work closely with Ron to see what we legally have to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's look at all those options.
Can I ask a question about, just about your office?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw a Facebook post from the coroner's office. Can you tell me why there's a Facebook for the coroner's office and why people's names are being mentioned on there? We're not there to, we're not here to advertise or anything like that. And I don't know why we have a coroner's Facebook.
What Facebook posts would mention names at all?
There, I, I have one. I saw one on the coroner's website that mentioned the family's name.
We don't have a website. We have a Facebook site.
But why do we have a Facebook for the coroner's office? I don't understand.
Other department heads have it, and we're going to.
But why? That's, I want to know why.
Because some of the projects that we're going to do that was part of initial agenda, I mean, running, we're going to be working on overdoses and trying to reduce that. And our school program and teaching children about overdoses and deaths and suicide and what happens and how it affects more than just one person. It affects several people. We're also going to become accredited nationally. We're going to work on that in the next year or two. And, well, we don't put anything on a Facebook post that would mention a name. And I know, I would like to see it. By the way, our Facebook page just went up today. So I, I, I will be glad to look at it, but I don't really know what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll show you.
Okay.
Later.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brett? Do we have any committee reports or announcements of anything that we should be aware of?
Don't we have a, the EDC that needs to be signed by us and council? We talked about today with Cambridge City?
Council's already approved that and we approved it this morning, right?
I just wanted to make sure. I thought we had.
Yeah, we signed that last.
But we did it today, then?
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Do you have anything, Bob?
Have a motion to adjourn?
Are you going to reschedule?
No, you need to reschedule.
February meeting.
And it's possible we're doing that. AIC's legislative conference is the 4th and 5th of February, which falls on our regular scheduled day. Jeff intends to be there. Kathy is actually on the state committee for council at AIC on that. And I am planning to attend as well. Awful lot of things that's going to be happening at the legislature this year that's going to have a huge impact on how we go about financing, particularly financing county government as well as other things. And so my recommendation is if it works with everybody, that we would meet on Thursday morning, 6th, instead of. instead of Wednesday.
Instead of the fifth.
The fifth.
I'm okay, I have our meeting.
Do you want to, do you want to defer it to Thursday or do you want to go ahead and?
I'm okay with Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday afternoon, that's fine. So commissioners will go ahead and have their meeting on the, on the fifth, but.
All right, but Thursday morning, eight o'clock, Thursday, February sixth, at eight AM.
It would also be good to be able to update everybody on what we learn out there at that conference.
It's Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh, it's Tuesday and Wednesday, okay, gotcha.
We have a motion to reschedule our meeting for the sixth.
Second.
Any other discussion, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so our next meeting will be on the sixth of February, Thursday morning, eight o'clock. Is there anything else that I have missed bringing forth tonight? Motion to adjourn? Was it favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here and I think we hope we haven't scared you away so far.